Ladies and gentlemen, if you could find a seat please, we're getting ready to start. And we will be starting on time. I am quite certain, yeah, I have refreshments, so there's no need to rush for refreshments. You're refreshed and you're all prepared. So if you could kindly find a seat so we can get started, like I said, on time. And just to make sure you're on the right, please. This is a town hall for which the Prime Minister of Jamaica is speaking. So this is where you are, right? And now to go to justice number four, garvey.org, and do what you need to do. Alright, so as we wait, I know we all have smartphones and some of the phones are way smarter than we are. So access them right now with the website, justice, J-U-S-T-I-C-E, the number four, garvey.org. We need 100,000 signatures by next week and we are not even at 5,000. And this is not right. Alright, please. And as you do so, share it to your loved ones and friends. It's for the petition, for the exoneration pardon, rather, of Marcus Masai Garvey. Time is running out to us and we need to get this petition in front of the President of the United States before he leaves office. So once again, could we find our seats, please? Now I use my time so as I acknowledge all the VIPs in the room, which you all are. Why don't we give ourselves a round of applause, please? Alright, that's why you clap yourselves. I'm sure to ask you to give me a round of applause because if you clap yourselves, I'm afraid they won't make good for me. Thank you very much, Scott. Then pass the sign, clap your feet, you know what all that means. Covering my visitor. Then pass the clap to someone, what does that mean? Offering. I walked into that moment. And just to introduce some ground rules tonight. The Prime Minister will speak after he is finished. We'll be entertaining as many questions as possible. We recognize that some of us like to editorialize and make speeches. There is one speech tonight and that's by the Prime Minister. So we're gonna ask you to be very frugal and conscientious in your asking your question. Question, so that we can have more people ask questions. So you will be a question and others will have a question, alright, please? So we can get through this as rapidly and accommodate as many as possible. I'm quite sure that those questions that will not be tendered, arrangements will be made for them to be answered. Alright? Thank you. Okay, we're getting ready to start, on time. Ladies and gentlemen, we're about to introduce on stage some of our key officials this evening. First, let me welcome you to the Jamaica Performing Arts Center right here in Jamaica, Queens. In this historic occasion, the first time we here in Queens are experiencing a Prime Minister speaking to us at a town hall forum. This is history in the making. In addition, the first time we've had a Prime Minister born after 1962 addressing us right here in Jamaica, Queens. So a lot of firsts tonight and I'm quite certain that you'll be enlightened by our Prime Minister's message and as such, the questions will flow thereafter. I'd ask you to save your applause for the guests who come on stage and then you'll do so at the end as I introduce them. I'd like to call on the Deputy Counsel General to New York, who is President Acting Counsel General, Mr. Darren McCree, to join us on stage, please. Alright, break the rules already. He is followed by Ambassador Audre Marx and we welcome her back, a special welcome. No, 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 no. We welcome her back, a special welcome. Followed by Senator the Honorable Kamina Johnson Smith, Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, with responsibility for the diaspora. And at this moment, I'd like you to stand and be welcomed for the first time to Jamaica, Queens, New York, the most honorable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister of Jamaica. Please remain standing. I'm gonna ask Ms. Kareen Madden to lead us with the United States anthem, which will be followed next by the Jamaica National Anthem and we'll be sung by Mr. Stephen Souza.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Eternal Father, bless our land, guide us with Thy mighty hand, keep us free from evil paths; ye are like true confessants to our leaders, great defenders, and true wisdom from above. Justice, truth, be ours forever, Jamaica land we love. Jamaica land we love.
Yeah, artists who sing anthems but they ruin the mic. It's difficult for shop people, I mean, but... Ladies and gentlemen, we are a God-fearing people. We start nothing in this life without the recognition of God in our lives. As such, we have a gentleman here, a deviate to page and just say, he's the people's bishop. Bishop Cecil Riley, and I hope there is no offering after this. Bishop Cecil Riley.
Those of us that are Pentecostals, we know we normally collect the offering before we pray. But I was told if I take the offering after the Prime Minister's speech, I will get doubled. So guess what I'm going to do? So Lord, we come to give you thanks, praise, honor, and glory for another day. Here we are rejoicing because you have blessed us. We recognize your blessing. Whether we go left or right, we are blessed. We go east, west, north, and south, we're blessed and it's because you are leading us. We thank you for our Prime Minister. We praise him and we worship him and we are asking you to continue to anoint him from the throne room of glory so that he can recognize that he has come to this time because we need such leadership. My God, as we look, everyone is failing. Everything around us is failing. But we are looking to you, the Author and the Finisher of all things. We ask that you forgive us for our trespasses. Where we have turned aside, we ask that you forgive us. We are returning to you, Lord, and we're asking for your blessings again. We recognize the fact that when we recognize you, you will bless us. You promised us in your word and the word is true when the righteous rule, the people will be at peace. We ask that you will send a special blessing on this proceeding this afternoon. God, we pray that you bless everything that will be said, everything that will be done. And we pray that at the end our benediction will be, it was indeed good for us to be here. Whatever we fail at asking, fail not now in granting, since we agree in the name of Jesus. Amen and amen.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Before I break, Deputy Counsel General, just want to acknowledge all our local elected officials who are here with us this evening. You know, it's a silly season here in the United States, Prime Minister, so the politicians are out, as you can see. And I want to recognize all our elected officials and to tell them thanks for serving us well and that the Jamaican community needs all the support. Jamaican community here in New York need all their support that they can offer us at this time. We have several officials, other officials, as well as business persons, community leaders. We welcome you. And I also must recognize our media, our media in the New York area. Thank you, thank you very much for your support of this endeavor. Please give them a round of applause, please. And it's time to introduce, to bring greetings and to bring, to introduce the Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, who will be introducing the Prime Minister. We call him Mr. Darren McCree, who is our present Acting Counsel General and Deputy Counsel General.
Thank you, Mr. Master of Ceremony. The most honorable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister of Jamaica, Senator the Honorable Kamina Johnson Smith, Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, Ambassador Audre Marx, Ambassador designated to the U.S., Ambassador Courtney Rattrick, Jamaica's permanent representative to the U.N., Ambassador Nigel Clark, Officer of Prime Minister, Ambassador Sharon Saunders, Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, government elected officials, heads of organizations, community leaders, members of the clergy, special invited guests, Jamaicans, friends of Jamaica, good evening. It is my pleasure to welcome you to this town hall meeting, which is a face-to-face with our Prime Minister, the most honorable Andrew Holness. Mr. Prime Minister, myself, along with the Jamaican community, who heartily welcome you to New York and in particular, Jamaica, Queens. We thank you, sir, for taking the time from your busy schedule to be with us in this town hall meeting with your people. Let me also welcome the Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, Senator the Honorable Kamina Johnson Smith and other members of the Prime Minister's delegation from Jamaica. Friends, Jamaica's impact on the world has been a story of inspiration to all. And as such, we must continue to dream the impossible and give thanks that with God on our side, we can face the future with much confidence. Our greatest fear is not that we are inadequate, but that we are powerful beyond measure. Ladies and gentlemen, I also have the honor this evening to introduce the next speaker, Senator the Honorable Kamina Johnson Smith, Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade. Senator Johnson Smith was appointed Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade on the 7th of March of this year and she has primary responsibility for diaspora affairs. She's an attorney-at-law by profession and has served approximately 50 years with the Jamaica bar. She's a graduate of the Norman Mannan Law School and a recipient of various awards and she holds professional certifications in areas such as legal and diplomatic French from the Harvard Law School in Boston. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcome to this corner, Senator the Honorable Kamina Johnson Smith, Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade.
The most honorable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister of Jamaica, locally elected officials, Ambassador Audre Marx, Ambassador Nigel Clark, Ambassador Courtney Rattrick, Ambassador Sharon Saunders, Mr. Darren McCree, Acting Counsel General, heads and members of diaspora organizations, religious and community leaders, members of the media, fellow friends, Jamaicans, good evening. And you know you're talking to Jamaicans when you hear "good evening", right? Let me say, let me say how happy I am to be here with you and to be here with you on such an auspicious occasion. Let me also express my deep appreciation to the organizing team who did such a fantastic job in getting this town hall. And maybe even more importantly, I want to thank all of you for coming out. I know how busy your schedules are and I want to know how much we appreciate your presence here today. Tonight, this town hall meeting provides another opportunity for the government to share with you some of our ideas and to have meaningful conversation as we look to deepen our engagement with you, the members of our Jamaica diaspora. As a Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade with the attendant responsibility for diaspora affairs, it is my vision to expand the diaspora movement and not just in size, but in the way in which you are engaged with us in Jamaica and we engage with you. And this is one of the reasons why, at this point in time, I am just so excited to hear about the Crime Initiative and Prevention Diaspora Task Force, which has just been launched. I'm so excited because you know that's something we struggle with in Jamaica and this is one of the most tangible ways in which we can collaborate and share some of the talent that is out here, our human capital that Prime Minister always refers to as "our commonwealth". That task force, we're looking forward to working with you. We know you're coming to Jamaica soon and we are waiting for you. Now, like Oliver, I travel very regularly. And when I travel, I try to fit in as much as possible to make sure that tax dollars are getting banned for the buck, right? That means however, that sometimes I have to try and be in two places at once, as you know, that's impossible. And what it also means is that I may have to leave you a little early this evening. But it won't be before I do the most important thing and that is to introduce to you the most honorable Prime Minister, Andrew Nyfel Holness. The Prime Minister was first elected as Member of Parliament to represent the constituency of West Central since Andrew in 1997. Now in his fourth consecutive term as MP, Mr. Holness has become Jamaica's ninth Prime Minister following the GLP's success in the general elections held on the 25th of February 2016. You'll recall of course that the Prime Minister first served as Head of Government from October 11th to January 2012, having succeeded former Prime Minister Bruce Golding. Prior to assuming the mantle of leading our nation, Prime Minister Holness worked steadily in various areas of political and governance systems. He has focused on several key portfolio responsibilities, including social welfare, community development, housing, and education. However, it is in the capacity of Minister of Education that Mr. Holness formed his passion and distinguished himself both as a opposition spokesperson as well as in cabinet, Minister of Education. He brought national attention and focus to literacy and instituted several programs to place Jamaica on the path to universal literacy at the primary level. Under his watch, Jamaica saw the introduction of the Career Advancement Program, a post-secondary technical and vocational training program for unattached youth, as well as some fundamental reforms of the education system, including the establishment of the Jamaica Teaching Council, the National Education Trust, with which many of you probably interact because that's the way that you're able to now donate to the education system without paying all of the taxes that would normally be itinerant or attended. The National Education Inspectorate, which measures how our schools are performing, the National College for Educational Leadership, which now trains principals and middle-level management, Centers of Excellence Program, and the Alternative Secondary Transition Education Program. These are just some of the reforms that he instituted as Minister of Education. So imagine what he's going to do now. Now, with the labors of our system of governance under those steady, capable, and visionary hands. Without more, without further ado, I ask you to join me in welcoming most honorable Prime Minister.
Look, I know some of you are actually expecting me to sing. I tried it before and my wife tells me only in the show. But what I want, Jamaica, Queens! You know, what I want is now a universal greeting since President Obama captured it. Pretty much universal. Erwin, allow me to associate myself with myself with the acknowledgements that have been done already. With all the distinguished persons here, I wouldn't want to make the error of giving one up. So distinguished ladies and gentlemen, it is my great pleasure being with you this afternoon, this evening. Jamaica is a great place. I had the distinct honor of standing in the stadium in Brazil where Usain Bolt was about to create history, third time over. And standing with 80,000 people in the stadium saying, "Usain Bolt, Usain Bolt", it sent chills. And then when he won, and it wasn't just the Jamaican contingent that was lower than everybody else that was celebrating. It was the entire stadium, representing almost all of humanity inside that stadium, celebrating the feat of Usain Bolt. And then when he stood on the podium to receive his medal and the national anthem played, tears almost came to my eyes. A little country, but with a huge footprint on the world. And there is no question that we have influenced pop culture. When you hear Rihanna, Andre, Snoop Dogg, and you can calm them off, all coming to Jamaica to find something new culturally, to infuse into their art form, to make it more popular and accessible. Jamaica really is the root of pop culture. You know, Erwin started off by asking you to take out your smartphones and go to the website, and I urge you to do it because Marcus Garvey is a national hero. But in the United States, he is not so recognized. And there is a charge against him, which we believe he should be exonerated from that. That should be struck from the record. It needs 100,000 signatures to make that petition effective. And that is all the stuff. But with your action, that simple action, you would be doing something very important for our country. But Marcus Garvey is only one in a history of Jamaicans that have impacted the world, that have stood up for the oppressed, the downtrodden, and the vulnerable. Jamaicans have had a major impact on the course of world events. We have been the country that little have stood up for the oppressed. We little, but we... You know, there is an incredible history of a Jamaican leaving Jamaica as a slave, escaped from the plantations, going to Haiti. Someone you may know as Dirty Bookman. Influencing the Haitian Revolution, the first revolution that created an independent black state in Haiti. Marcus Garvey opened the minds of black people to what they could be. He preached a doctrine of self-reliance, of economic enterprise for the black community. Impacted many thinkers around the world. Bob Marley through his poetry and music impacted many leaders in Africa. And today, wherever you go, people say, "Bob Marley, Bob Marley". And it is no different from workers in New York relying on Jamaicans to stand up for them for their rights. We're probably the only country that has a word in the dictionary named after it, Jamaican. Look it up. And you know what it means? It means to be assertive. And wherever you go, you will know the Jamaican, you know, his chest is up. We are not going to be pushed around. And it's a strong trait, a good trait to have. And we have done very well for a small country. But we are in a new time, and there are many more things that we have to conquer and achieve. And I would suspect that in a moment of reflection, everyone in this room would agree, yes, Jamaica has accomplished a lot, but we could have done so much more. And I'm told that Dr. Julius Garvey is here. We met so famable in Jamaica when you visited.
I apologize for coming late, but traffic and party. I had a busy day. I was up in Hartford, Connecticut, where there was a ribbon-changing ceremony for a park for Marcus Garvey. I drove three hours from my health destroying at seven o'clock, two hours there, and three hours back, till the attorney arrived and said, "I'm here". So, because I wanted to have an opportunity to speak with the Prime Minister and to listen to our Prime Minister. I came in serendipitous, slisser. Just when you were crazy, my bad. So I'm not sure that I have to say anything. But, yes, 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 yes. But as the Prime Minister said, you know, we are an assertive people. And in order really for us to be assertive, we have to stand up for what is right. And it is right that Marcus Garvey should be exonerated, because he committed no crime. He was criminalized here in the United States. Why? Because he was standing up for black people all over the world. You know that, and I know that. So what we have to do now is let the President of the United States and the people of America know that the people of Jamaica, the people of the Caribbean, Jamaicans all over the world, Africans all over the world, are behind Marcus Garvey, because he's our hero. He's Jamaica's first national hero and the leader of the world. So I'm saying to all of you here, go to the website, justiceforgarvey.org, and you'll be able to get a link to the whitehouse.gov, which, where the petition resides. All you have to do is, you know, press your little things there, and they're going to ask you for identification, which is, you know, an email address or something like that. But you must do it, because we're running out of time. We need 100,000 signatures. And Mr. Prime Minister, I'm going to ask you to go back to our country and tell everybody to sign on, because you don't need to be a citizen. You don't, you don't need to be a citizen, and age doesn't matter. Okay, so everybody in Jamaica can sign this petition. And of course, we have, I keep telling me, two and a half million people, but I think it's more, and we have that many overseas. So my charge to you, Mr. Prime Minister, is for us to do this together. You know, many Prime Ministers have tried, you know, from Alexandria, Black in 83, and PJ and Portia. Under your stewardship, I think we can bring this home.
So, as I was saying, Jamaica could have achieved and should have achieved much more than presently has. The task now falls to a new generation of leaders to address the crippling issues that face your motherland country, Jamaica. I'm not here tonight to gloss over any of the issues. Neither am I here to berate our beloved country, but to have a frank discussion with you and to explore ways in which you could help Jamaica meaningfully, transition from a developing country to a developed country. We know our history, we know what we have gone through, we know the overhangs of slavery. We know the problems that are our legacy from colonialism, but we cannot allow those to anchor us in the past. We cannot allow those to anchor us in the past. So, I don't share many of the conventional views and outlook as to who is a Jamaican and why we are poor and why we have so much crime. I want to take a far more enlightened perspective as to the path of our economic growth, social development and prosperity and well-being policies. In our campaign, it was essentially a juxtaposition between poverty and prosperity. Because there is a view in Jamaica that if you don't say that you care for the poor, then you are not a part of the culture of the country. And so what has happened is that Jamaica has gotten caught up in a politics of poverty, which leads to a fear of doing anything. But it is that politics of poverty, that fear of breaking new ground, doing new things, order, rule of law. It is that fear of ensuring that your system is orderly that has actually kept people poor. It is because the line is long, why people are disorderly and break the line. What has happened to us under the politics of poverty is that government has become the arbiter of who gets placed in the line, rather than ensuring that systems work efficiently, regardless of who you are or where you came from or what. That has been the politics of poverty. And until we confront that in the psyche of Jamaica, then we will not truly liberate the great potential that exists within us as a people, as we have demonstrated in other lands and in other spheres. So, I embrace the concept of prosperity. I believe Jamaica was never destined to be a poor country. With all the incredible resources that we have, our destiny is to be a prosperous nation, to be an example for black people all around the world, just as all Marcus Garvey and Bob Marley have preached and shown. But to do that, you need good government. You need government that believes in the rule of law. You need government that will set the stage for the natural ability, industry, talent and enterprise of the people to be able to fulfill themselves. You need government that recognizes that our people have not all equally inherited from the past. You know, there are some generations of Jamaicans who own no land. There are generations of Jamaicans coming who can look for no inheritance from their parents. So government must acknowledge that wealth in Jamaica, or put it another way, the wealth of Jamaica is not equally distributed. And I would say, on top of that, one element, the wealth of Jamaica is not eerily distributed. But the way to get wealth is never to just take it from one and give it to the others. So governments have to support generations in creating wealth, in giving opportunity, in equalizing opportunity, in looking for the vulnerable and supporting and protecting them, in ensuring that everyone has access to rights, whether it is property rights, education rights, homeownership rights, security rights, religious rights, freedom of expression rights. Government, good government, does these things. So, we have a prosperity agenda, and we know it is not easy. There is a long road ahead of us. But we are going to work as hard as we can, as diligently as we can, and as faithful and loyal as we can, to make sure that Jamaica is the place of choice for you to live, work, do business, raise your family. And we're tired. We have firstly reckoned with some of the fundamental problems of Jamaica. The first one was literally forced upon us during the global financial meltdown in 2009. And that was taking on a new approach to the fiscal management of public finances. So now we have fiscal rules, pretty much like how the United States economy is managed, with rules and targets. And that is going very well. That has been done in partnership with the IMF. And it is not the IMF imposing anything on us, and I want that view to change. It is us imposing on ourselves what we need to do to have a strong, robust, responsive and responsible world. It has come at a great cost. It has come with us spending a significant portion of what we earn in revenues to repay debt. But the truth is, we can't blame anybody for our debt. And if we claim to be an independent country, then we can't go around asking people to write off our debt. Independence means that we take responsibility for what we do. So there is no free ride, and Jamaica is not looking for any free ride. We have more than enough human capital to pull ourselves out of the rut when we find ourselves. So we have developed, it has forced on us a certain level of political maturity. It is, I would think, a certain level of social consensus around the fiscal management of the country. So, we're not out of the woods, but we are managing our fiscal affairs much better than we were 20 years ago. The main target is our high debt. Jamaica is in a unique place. We have a debt that is 125% of our GDP. It's not as bad as Greece, it's not as bad as other countries, but it's, it's, it's obvious, maybe number two or number three in the world in terms of the debt to GDP. And we have to pay back. See, the truth is, we have financed our development by debt. We have not financed it by growth, because in the last 40 years, we have seriously grown on average over 1%. So all of that achieved and we're doing, a lot of that has been paid for by debt. Time come now for us to change it, for us to bring down our debts, grow our economy, and pay for our development and achievements by virtue of the sweat of our growth. So, I wish to report that we are making progress on the fiscal management of our country. Governments, whether it is the JLP government or the PMP government, are seized on this and are far more responsive in our fiscal affairs. The next phase of our development and tackling our problem is to get economic growth, to get the engine of the country turning. You know how it feels when your country is booming. It's not so hard to get a job. It's not so hard to get a loan. It's not so hard to get a loan. It's not so hard to get a good soul. And that can happen in Jamaica, because it happened in Jamaica in the 1960s, where we grew by more than 6% on average. And indeed, at points, we were more than 8% growing. We can have those days again in Jamaica. But it requires us to take control of some other things in our society. Chief among them is crime and violence. It's really very disturbing to me, and it is indeed now the greatest challenge to see the level of murders and other crime being committed on a daily basis. It threatens the state. It creates a sense of fear, uncertainty. It drives away business. But you know what? It affects the poor the most. Because the people who are being killed are not the people who necessarily can protect themselves by having, you know, security guards paying for security arrangements. It is the poor people. It is the young unemployed males. That is the profile of the murderers. The murderer and the murderer. So, the government has to act in a decisive way. To first halt this scourge on our society and then address the fundamental factors that drive it. In the United States, we have a very supportive partner. And of course, there are mutual interests there. A large part of crime in Jamaica is driven by the lottery scam. And it is having an impact. And we have been working with the government of the United States to put a dent in, but there is still much more to be done. We are developing Plan Secure Jamaica, which will be a comprehensive crime plan, which will require funding. And the truth is that if that is the major problem, then the government of Jamaica will have to put its money where its problem is. The other thing that we need to get on top of is bureaucracy of government. There's nothing wrong with bureaucracy. Bureaucracy is a good thing. It's actually meant to be the organization around decision-making and implementation of decisions. But somehow bureaucracies tend to become self-serving. I have my job for my sake. Not necessarily that I have my job in a bureaucracy to serve. And in a public bureaucracy, where initiative sometimes is smothered because you're not allowed to take risks, you have to play by the rule, then it is more the form that is important than the function. So if, and literally, if you fill out the wrong form, there is no function. If you sign in the wrong space, you get back the form. You have to fill it out correctly, and then that slows up the speed of business. So there is necessarily reform needed in the Jamaican bureaucracy. And when we talk about reforming the bureaucracy, people immediately want to jump to the size of the bureaucracy. For us, it's not so much the size. For us, it is how do we get the public sector to facilitate the private sector? Because growth takes place when your private sector is growing, when you can get them to invest their money faster. They feel safe that their money won't be whittled away. There is no corruption that will turn them off, that their investment will be protected. And so, we are now moving into the next phase of the evolution of a new Jamaican state, which will see a very efficient public sector, which will actually become a source of attraction, that people will say, "Well, you know, I could go to Puerto Rico, or I could go to Trinidad, but you know what? I get too faster in Kingston, Jamaica." And that is what we are aiming for. We are aiming to have a public sector that will increase the velocity of business in Jamaica. The third thing that we have to get a grip on is our education system. And I know that it's near and dear to your hearts as it is to mine. You know, we have some of the brightest kids, and it is a tragedy. It is a tragedy, and many of them are literally wasting it. So, we are going to align our education system with our economic priorities. We're going to make sure that we train our young friends who are very close to the world of work, so that when they leave school, they leave school with relevant marketable skills that will allow them to get jobs easily. While we're doing that, we are bringing in the businesses that will utilize those skills. So the government will be undertaking a coordinated approach between the labor market and the investment economy. So, I think I've given you a fairly good description of what it is that I'm involved, what is it that the new government is doing, what is the philosophy behind what we're doing, because we're not just mindless people. We do have a worldview and an outlook. And I hope that we have achieved a mind share here tonight, and I look forward to your questions. Congratulations.
I must say, it's an opportunity for going further to acknowledge the Prime Minister's mother and sister, where the audience can learn a lot. So you heard the Prime Minister. And he did say that he would speak briefly. I never even believe politicians when they say that. But I take my statement on advisement, because he wanted to provide more time for questions. And I must also share with you too that this event is being streamed live all over the world. Harry Jam Reid is also carrying it live on the radio right now. So, whatever we do here, don't really stay here. Unless you're in Jamaica. But anyway, some very interesting points you have heard. I know that the community here in the diaspora is very much interested in the whole crime situation. Here, the Prime Minister addressed it, that a plan to secure Jamaica is in the works. Can't come too soon. The whole situation of our education system should be aligned with the country's economic system. Really makes sense, huh? Don't make a sense that you have jobs that people cannot work in, right? Or people with educational skills and there's no job set. So you find that people with PhDs doing things that they shouldn't be doing instead of utilizing what they've learned. And the whole idea of the whole coordinated approach, and Mr. Prime Minister said that is something that many in the audience would be very much interested in that. And I just want to go back to the whole bureaucracy. And PM, there's a general feeling that if something can be done in two days, and we know it can be done in two days, in Jamaica's inherent, it must be 20 days. It's general, isn't that so? You know it can be done in two days, and somehow, it no, just have to be 20 days. And what I mean by that is the sense of urgency and the response to things that are necessary. I also want to share with you too, sir, that the diaspora also needs to be re-engaged. And I look forward and I look forward to, I think we look forward to that process. The whole situation of our intellectual remits. We are more than sending remittances to Jamaica. Intellectual remits, or technology transfer. We're at that age now when people are in a position to dedicate their experiences back home. The whole idea of even, sir, a temporary teaching assignment is that some of our teachers are here to come to Jamaica and do some stuff. And that goes across all professions. You know, these are some of the creative ways that I think the diaspora can be engaged. And I know there are many others. So, yes, good government believes in the rule of law. And then many will say, justice is necessary. So, people break the law, justice must serve them too. Now, speaking of justice and serving YouTube, there are rules and regulations here too. So, when one breaks rules, justice always follows it, right? So there are some microphones, and I wish someone to identify for me now where the microphones are. On here. I need someone from the authority to stand by the microphone from the organizers. Mr. Robert Bailey, read them. Because we'd like to identify you when you come to a microphone to ask a question. Please identify yourself, and we will call in you when it's your turn to ask the question. So officially, the floor is open. And might I remind you that if it comes a point where I ask you to pause, I will do so. But trust me, I'm very, very respectful of you, and I wish you to be respectful of me too, alright? So. Here, you can sit ready. Ambassador Clark, will you join us on stage, please? Ambassador Clark? Okay. And the mic, can you reach at the microphone? One, two, three, start. Okay, alright. We will start to advise the board member, Mr. John Penau. Question?
Good evening, Prime Minister. Welcome again, and thank you so much. It's my honor to meet you.
Thank you.
I had a question of the Jamaica Diaspora Movement, the program in its current form. I noticed that we have not gotten a date for, say, the date for the conference for next year. And I'm just wondering, are there going to be changes in the movement, in the program, the way it stands? Or do you plan to continue with the same format of the Jamaica Diaspora?
It's interesting. I was just having a conversation with Minister Kamina Johnson Smith before she left, and she did mention to me that we do intend, of course, to continue with the engagement of the diaspora and intensify the engagement of the diaspora. The exact form, we did not discuss, but I'm certain that very soon, there will be a response. But I wanted the diaspora to know that we have put in place here Ambassador-designate Audrey Marks. The minister has been missioned. Ambassador Marks has been missioned. The mission is mobilize the Jamaican diaspora. And I want to associate myself with comments that were made by her when, you know, we can't do without the remittances. It's very important. Very important. Please send more money back. But there is far more than just the remittances. If you start to think of it, half of Jamaica is outside of Jamaica. That means half of our human potential is outside of the country. That means that the Jamaican Commonwealth, not just what we have in Jamaica, but all around the world, is a very powerful tool. We just have not yet figured out how to fully leverage it and utilize it. But we have been thinking on a strategic level. In the audience here today is a great son of Jamaica, Dr. David Pantone. Many of you may know him. And I don't want to let all the plans do earlier. Can I say even just a few words on it? But I have assigned him to look into a way in which we can, once and for all, get the diaspora bond going. And I know he can do it. And so I know he's working very hard, and we're looking at the various options. I don't want to say too much too soon, but we're working on that. Because the truth is, right? You know, philanthropy is great. The diaspora gives a lot to education. But it's small giving making a great impact on various communities and various schools. But what we need right now is a huge impact on infrastructure, a huge impact on investments. Because what is happening is that we have great interest from China. We have great interest from France, who just divested the Kingston port to a French company. It could very well have been a conglomerate of Jamaicans. And part of the reform of government is that we will be doing a series of diversions. And the way which you can participate is through our stock market or through our diaspora bond issues. So we're working on the architecture for that, which will be real powerful ways in which you can help your country.
Thank you. Robert, miss question?
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Benda. I'm the Executive Director of Jamaica Queens's Business Improvement District. And we're so honored to have you here today, Mr. Prime Minister and your excellency. So yesterday, our state comptroller announced a number of economic indicators about Jamaica-Queens. And one of them was that we have the largest diaspora right here. As a former State Department official that worked on sister cities, I would love to see a sister city between Jamaica-Queens and Jamaica-West Indies, because also we have a lot to learn from you in terms of tourism. We have 16 hotels being built here this year, and we want to learn about how you are so just excel all over the world about attracting people to Jamaica. And I would love to form it around food and music as well. I think that once the cultural ties, we'll be able to see more of the business ties follow. And so I would love to get your thoughts on that potential idea.
Don't tell her too much here, please.
We also have our state senator. We also have our state senator, who's Jamaican-American, and Mr. Connery. Our business has seen Mr. Bolt run down Jamaica Avenue and do the bidding for this relationship.
No, it's an excellent idea. I think the appropriate cities would be here, Queens, and Montego Bay, which is the tourist neck of Jamaica, probably the Caribbean. Montego Bay is expanding rapidly. And I think it would be great to have a twin ambassador. And I think you should pursue that.
Okay. Henry?
Honorable Prime Minister, you spoke about tourism, and the woman who just spoke spoke about tourism. My experience is...
Hold on, the microphone.
It's a doggy in the pocket.
Okay, could you hold that point while we fix the microphone, we'll come right back to you. Could you just go with the angle? Lorraine, could we have next, can we check that mic, please? Can we have somebody check this mic?
Thank you. May I continue here? My recent experience in going to Jamaica, where I went to the Rio Hotel, and I received quite a number of complaints from the staff, the Jamaican staff. And they told me of a work schedule where they worked for six months, then they were dismissed, and a new group came in. And the management of the hotels were mainly Spaniards. And I found that, and not only at the Rio, but also at the Iberia staff, I found that to be an insult to our tourist industry. Because Jamaica is a mature tourist vendor, or you know, procureur, destination. We have the skills in Jamaica to manage, to operate, to even start up hotels. I know you were not in office at the time as the Prime Minister when these things were done, but what can we do about it? The other thing, and salaries, I hear a lot...
One question, one question, please.
It's all involved.
Yeah, well, he can answer that question, please, we have a long lead. Thank you very much.
Well, I understand what you're saying. One of the challenges that Jamaica will face is that as we attract overseas investment, our labor laws will have to be reviewed. And the nature of the contracts that are engaged will have to also be looked at. But I would say this, I mean, I've heard the complaints, I've visited many of these hotels, and I've heard these complaints. And the new Minister of Tourism, I know, is actively engaged in the industry. And I happen to know that he is having discussions with these owners. Because there is another way of doing this and being profitable at the same time. So you know, if you look at the model of, let's say, and I don't want to call, you know, names, but for example, Sandals Group, they invest heavily in their human resource. Tourism is inherently, ultimately, a service industry. And service industries require people, and so you have to treat your people well. And I know that there are models in Jamaica where the hotels take care of their human resources, and their human resources take care of them. Good evening, Mr. Prime Minister.
I can speak very loudly. I know, Mr. Prime Minister, that there will be changes in that area.
Which is what I'm saying, that many of these are contracts. So I can't speak to contracts. But it is about influencing the owners to take a look at their contracts and attracting them to other models that work and maintain their profitability.
Good evening, Mr. Prime Minister, my name is Colin Moore. And even though I was born in Guyana, I proudly regard myself as a member of the Jamaican Diaspora here. My question has to do with the development of a form of tourism called heritage tourism. Because Jamaica has the greatest historical landmarks in the anti-colonial struggle. My concept would be based on Alcon Park, which was the first anti-colonial struggle in the world against oppression. Then in St. Paris, there is the birthplace of the Taki Rebellion. Then in Montego Bay, there's the Sambshap Rebellion. Then in From Westmoreland, there is St. Thomas, there is in the world, Groenewald, Groenewald Bridge, that's correct. And in Westmoreland, there is the 1930th Rebellion. Sir, I have a proposal which incorporates this concept and which can make Jamaica one of the leading countries in the world in heritage tourism. I'd like to meet with you personally to discuss this concept, sir. So if you can give me some time, where I can meet you, I will be willing to meet.
I was in your beautiful country recently, and I have very good relations with President Rango from Guyana. And I think there is an incredible opportunity for economic cooperation between Guyana and Jamaica. You know, Guyana has landmarks that is probably about the size of the United Kingdom. Yeah, Guyana is a big country relatively, with a small population. And we're exploring ways in which we can work together. Now, it's interesting that you pointed out heritage tourism. And I'm going to ask one of my assistants to find you and exchange numbers so we can talk more. But I'm certain President Rango of Guyana would be upset if I said that he also sent to me, he wants some of our tourist expertise to come to Guyana to help in the development of ecotourism. Because Guyana, in the sense that Jamaica has heritage attractions, Guyana has amazing ecotourism attractions. This is all we carry here and work together to build a strong region.
Good evening, this is Owen Irving. And so I'm glad that you proposed upon for your recent virtual host. Represent you love that will be like in Jamaica's business. On you for coming out to address at this seminar, please. I have two questions, I can only ask one. You mentioned the crime as the greatest challenge, and indeed it is, that the main thing on our minds. Now, for a while, I've been wondering if, you know, all the people out, all the people, and all the people out. And the thing is, I'm not asking myself, but at the same time, I think it can help. See, let me call the man, and he won't win.
Get to the question, please, sir, please, question. No, I don't want to get, I want to get here right now, please.
All the present persons here in this country, our law athletes, their own ambassadors. I would call them the darlings of our nation. I think they are very loved, and based upon that, I think when we have all this going on and the various events, work of supper, it's I'm told that there's less crime at that time.
Mr. Owen Irving, please, with respect to you, sir, I'd like to ask a question, because you're editorializing right now, we don't have the time for that. Please, question. That's the last time I'm saying, sir, otherwise, it was an excuse, please, please, please.
And so I'm just, what can they say, what can they come up to use these athletes to launch an anti-crime campaign against the, against the racial conflict? As far as using them to, like, on a motorcade, a car accident, from taking something out of Montego Bay?
Well, you know, I mean, I can answer you very quickly.
Thank you.
In saying that, you know, our athletes have made themselves available for social marketing campaigns in this regard before. And I'm certain that they would again, and again, and again, and again. Because, yes, the social marketing, the iconic nature of their status right now could influence some young people who are on the margin. But of course, the real problem is far deeper and far greater than that. The problem is, we have to take profit out of crime. That's number one. So one of the crime that is driven is organized, it is crime for profits, maybe they're treated as a business. And then we have to take the opportunity out of crime, right? Which means greater police presence, greater intelligence gathering, and that kind of thing. So we have to spend some money on that. And then we have to deal with the domestic crime issue. And none of that is just an entrenchment of violence in the society. Our first response to conflict is usually a violent one. And so that means public education, a consistent message of saying, "Stop beating the people then." And if people don't agree with that, but that is part of the radical change that needs to take place in the Jamaican society. Because when you do that, what you're actually doing is training your children to believe that the only way to resolve a conflict or to repair something that is wrong is to resort to violence. And that has to be broken in our society. We have to find better ways of parenting our children. I know Jamaica told after that, you know, said my mother right here, she don't believe it. But what more, we have to find other ways, right? And I see her with my niece, you know, and I'm saying, "Well, you're lucky." Because what my little niece get away with, I would get away with. And I'm sure my little niece is going to grow up to be just a great young lady. So I think that's part of the cultural change. And then we have to change a way in which the state uses violence against its own people. And we've had two commissions, well, one commission and a report by a public defender, which clearly calls for an apology, and which highlights that the Jamaican state has used force in ways that were not beneficial to the people of the country. And that has to be corrected. So I agree with you. As part of a toolbox, of a toolkit of strategies to deal with crime. But that in itself is not the only thing and could not solve the problem.
Next question, okay?
Most honorable Prime Minister, Ambassador Marks. I have in my possession 20 years of research. I am Colonel Bruce Barclay, former of the JDF. I have 20 years of research in counterterrorism and crime-fighting strategies. Would you, on behalf of your government, accept this as a solution? I was very passionate about solving crime in Jamaica. I lived in Timor-Lenghadi. From Timor-Lenghadi, I went to Jamaica College and joined the JDF. I am a human exception. Did you train up a child in the way we are, she's a girl? Thank you very much.
Hey, I don't know what to respond to.
Okay, we go to another question over here. John Crowe from Grenada.
Good evening, sir.
I didn't say John Crowe, I said John Crowe.
My name is John Crowe from the beautiful island of Grenada. My question has to do... Normally, I'd be standing at the back somewhere with a camera, but I got punished, as Paul said, because I broke the law. I got here too early, I didn't follow directions. Anyhow, the question I have regarding tonight, your position on the CCJ. Where does Jamaica stand where the Caribbean Court of Justice is?
Our position has not changed. Our position is that if Jamaica is to change fundamental part of its constitutional architecture, it must be put to a vote, a referendum, and that remains our position. We're not inherently or intrinsically opposed to the CCJ. But in the scheme of things that Jamaica has to do, we believe right now we should focus on our economic independence and focus our entities on that. When it is time for us to change, then we have to put it to the people. We shouldn't be as presumptuous to believe that as politicians, we can grow and create our own court. True power resides in the people, and the people should decide what their court should look like, and it should not...
Hold on, hold on, next question over here, miss? Hold the mic for me, please. Let's speak alone, it was a firm decision, here.
My name is Shilal Champe, and I have a question. My mother is Jamaican, and when I went to Jamaica last year, I saw a lot of poor kids. Is there anything like, any program that I can do to help those kids? Like, give them like my allowance money?
You know, it's the thought, the thought that's important. You have an incredible heart. And your sense of compassion and empathy is amazing. And it shows the innocence of children. And that is actually the start of doing something and making a major change. I'm sure she's going to do something major. Of course, it's Jamaica. Well, listen, the government has, even within the context of the IMF program, placed as a priority protecting the vulnerable. So yes, they are, you know, they're still absolute poverty in Jamaica. And there are still many kids who don't have access to the basics. But we have decided to improve our social safety net and to increase spending on areas that will benefit the most vulnerable. The school feeding program, or social safety net program, which we call the PATH program, and other such programs that will impact women, children, and youth. So we are doing things that will, in the future, near future, result in a serious reduction of poverty. And my personal drive in life is to end poverty in Jamaica.
Before we go further, ladies and gentlemen, let me kind of break it to you softly, you know? There's just no way we're gonna handle all these questions here. There's just no way we're gonna handle all these questions here directly tonight. So I'd like you to take this website down or this email, rather.
Well, I mean, just to say that I know many of you in the audience use social media. And I try to interact as much as possible with the diaspora on social media. So if you have questions on social media, facebook.com, Andrew Holness is always there. You can shoot us a question. We'll have people monitoring and we'll try to get a response.
I tell you what, those people are on our main appendix. Anyway. Social media savvy. Andrew, yes, correct me. Microphone, please.
Can you hear me?
Perfect.
My name is Dr. Karen Dorgana. I'm with the Mayor's Office of Workforce Development. I've had the honor of being in your lovely country doing workshops for small businesses from 2002. My question to you is, what are you preparing to do for workforce development? And what can lead you to assist you in that division?
Well, many years ago, Jamaica created the Heart. And some of you may have even been graduates of Heart. It's an amazing institution with great capacity and training. But where we are now is that we need to develop an apprenticeship program. Because the new work environment, the new workforce, has to be applications-based, skills-based. And we are now in that process of ensuring that our kids not only leave with academic qualification, which is based upon our British heritage and our traditional system, we are focused heavily on applying a reward system to academic qualifications. But the world is, yes, the academic stream is important, but the technical and STEM stream, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, is also very important. And so that's our emphasis now in ensuring that Jamaica is producing the technical skills and competences necessary to articulate in the modern work environment and to take advantage of the new jobs and opportunities that are coming because of the changes, the rapid changes in technology.
Okay.
Well, now that you've said you're from the Mayor's Office, the consulate has written that down, I'm told, and we will be in direct contact with them.
Well, that's fine. I've been, had a pleasure being in Jamaica, but a lot of work.
Port of Toney, that's the place.
Now, we're gonna go to balcony.
Hi, Prime Minister. Thanks for coming on. I think you're just a good person anyway. My concern is that, as you know, you're in the US, a really largest people diaspora in the world. But like myself, as a dwarf citizen, I cannot come out to Jamaica and take your job. We don't, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't people might play with citizens. But someone from Great Britain, someone from Canada, you know, from South Wales, Commonwealth, can do that. I think I spoke to you originally sometime before you became Prime Minister. I think you're against that.
No, 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 I'm never against it.
No, you're against the fact that I should have become an, I was able to write. I mean, you're for the idea.
Yes, yes, I support the idea.
Idea, right. Now, my Prime Minister, do you think our administration, do you think we're gonna get to that point?
Yes, it is a part of our legislative agenda, but in everything, we have to make priorities. We've been, you know, less than a year in government, and the critical thing is getting our economic program on board. The other issues which require legislative direction, those will come. So our position has not changed, as we have said. You know, it's unfair that because we're the British Commonwealth, we allow someone, for example, from Australia to come to Jamaica, vote, and could sit in our parliament. But if you're from the United States, you can't. And the truth is that you are part of the Jamaican Commonwealth. And so we should change our constitution to allow people in the Jamaican Commonwealth to be able to participate in our elected politics. But of course, all of these things which require a change in the constitutional architecture would have to go through parliament, a legislative process, and possibly a referendum. But I think I know what the outcome would be. I think most Jamaicans embrace the people in the diaspora, particularly the people who live here in the United States.
Okay. Over there. Lauren?
Mr. Prime Minister, my name is Ambassador Consul General McRae. My name is Stu Donbar, and, Prime Minister, I am an architect, so that would probably help in many things. I saw recently that the Goat Island thing is back on track. Now, I am a fan of all the little lizards over there. And as an architect, I believe it is part of our national heritage. The Goat Islands were used by the US military during World War II as a base, and they left it. So I don't believe the Chinese have such ambitions to do what they'd like to do. So I'd like to find out what exactly happened since the last time it came up till now to have it come back on the table, and if there will be substantive discussion with the public regarding that.
That's it. I'm glad you raised the question because I've been following the conversation in the media about Goat Island. But I've toured Goat Island myself, and recently I went along with several environmentalists to tour the Portland Bay, which is a big, basically, protective area in which the Goat Islands are. You know, it is a beautiful, pristine place which we have to preserve. And I've also sat with the Chinese interests who would want Goat Island. If they want Goat Island for various... They want Goat Island for various reasons. But we have examined the Goat Island proposal. And we have already taken a decision, which has to be filtered through the government, that there are other locations in Jamaica that would do less environmental damage. Be just as good strategically. So we are going ahead with a logistics development and a transshipment port. It's just not going to be at Goat Island. The entry into an official document may not have represented accurately the decision of the government. And when I get back to Jamaica, I will be making a statement in parliament to bring the country up to date as to exactly what was the decision that we have taken.
Good evening, Mr. Prime Minister. My name is Horatio McCoy. I am the liaison officer of the Mayor, City of Patterson, New Jersey. And tonight I have accompanied the longest-serving municipal elected official, the current council president, the City of Patterson, Bill McCoy. So here's my question. Sir, would you consider deploying the service of the Jamaica Defense Force to be trained as military police to assist your police fight in crime? And would the Jamaica Constitution allows this?
Well, firstly, I do owe you an apology because I should have come to Paterson some time ago. When I visited a year ago. Unfortunately, schedule did not allow. But it's always in the back of my mind that you were so gracious to have extended the invitation that I wasn't able to take it. Maybe one day in the near future, I will be your guest in Paterson. And congratulations on your visit. Very good. I don't think that many people know that the Jamaica Defense Force is integrally involved in the fight against crime. They support the police in many things they do, in many operations. And they do so quietly, and they do so without too much public exposure. But the army is currently deployed and is currently supporting the operations of the police in strategic ways. There is a school of thoughts which suggests that we don't need a defense force. We don't need an army. And therefore, what we should do is to convert the army into a police force, into a gendarmerie. But it is not a settled view in Jamaica. Because you still need to have a reserve of particular expertise to deal with any eventual issues and any natural disaster. And it is, you know, a reservoir of skills, as you could have seen with the coroner who spoke a while ago. What I can say to you is that there is need to increase the size of the police force so that we can have more policemen on the streets, especially in our urban areas, in Antico Bay, in Hanover, in Westmoreland, and in Claremont, where the crime rate is particularly concerning. And we need to have more of our youngsters in the military. More of them in the military, meaning they are out of crime. On a national service program where they can participate in nation building and giving service to the country in exchange for learning a skill and character. So this is a program that the government of Jamaica is pursuing. We call it the LEX program, Learning to Earn, Learning to Give, and Learning to Save. And that is being worked on right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Claudia Powell, Chair of the Jamaican Diaspora Health Center here in the Northeast. Welcome to Jamaica, please. Earlier, you spoke about Jamaica being the place to live, retire, raise your children, bring education. But as a member of the diaspora, I have one concern. You did not touch on the healthcare. Nothing else can go on. The diaspora has been working diligently with the government, whichever administration has been in, to make Jamaica be a place to have first-class healthcare. But there's still a long way to go. As you might have known, recently, we tragic lost a young man tragically, the athlete from Saint Orleans College. Now, there were physicians there, but something has been saying as an AED, Automatic External Mitribulator, might have saved his life. Members of the diaspora have been working to ensure that these various teams have an AED. As a Prime Minister, I'd like to hear from you. What's your government's plan in improving the health system in Jamaica?
Well, let me, your question has two parts, really. How can the government work closely with the diaspora to ensure that the great level of concern and philanthropy that exists is actually transmitted back to Jamaica? And I believe I've spoken before, and I know the general complaints of how difficult it is to actually give to Jamaica. And I had a discussion recently in cabinet with the new Minister of Health. And we are working on a program that will make it much easier for your giving to actually be received in Jamaica without all the bureaucracy and the red tape. So the things that we want is the private sympathy that we want. Let me just address generally the health challenges. The health threat is serious. We have lifestyle diseases that affect a great portion of the Jamaican population. Diabetes, hypertension, some respiratory diseases. And we have to get on top of that. And that can only be dealt with by public education, preventative strategies. And the new Minister of Health has been very active. He's leading a public education campaign, trying to get Jamaicans to be active. Simply walking, getting up out of your seats instead of sitting down, doing exercise, changing your diet, these kinds of things. Public education, very important in tackling the major health issues in Jamaica. So lifestyle diseases, very high and very costly to the country. And I think we are making some impact there. People are a bit more aware of lifestyle diseases, and they're making the changes necessary. Still not where it should be, but we're working on that. And then there are the epidemic threats. You would have heard about chicken gonads that swept through the country a couple of years ago. And now there is the Zika virus. And the only way to fight that is we try to control the vector, which is mosquitoes. And we have done a fairly good job. We halted the spread. It hasn't spread as widely as the chicken gonad before it. But we've also engaged a very comprehensive public education campaign. And if people have acted in a way to protect their own health, and that's very good. But the other major health challenge, believe it or not, is violence. The cost to the society and how it climbs up the health system to treat wounds and stabbings. That is the real challenge that we have to deal with. And a part of that as well would be road accidents. We are having a real challenge with road accidents. And again, public education and law enforcement. So the health issue isn't always straight called hospitals. It's really how do we get our population to act in ways that protect your own interests? To literally take your lives into their hands, be responsible for how they live. And so the government is stressing personal responsibility and preventative strategies. Because the other strategies are far more costly than we can afford.
Okay, I just wanna say to you, Mr. Prime Minister, that the healthcare sector in the diaspora is one of the most fundamental of the diaspora engagement relationships that Jamaica has. I think Jamaica in the medical field are some of the best in the world. And I think that one of the things that I think is being requested is for dialogue very soon with the Ministry of Health to recondition existing relationships so that we can have more effective means of delivering our services. There are many who would like to do but are faced with significant roadblocks. And I think that's what we need.
Good evening, Mr. Prime Minister. My name is Carmita Alvaros, and I am a forensic social worker and the president and founder of an organization called Fury, which assists individuals who are deported. And my question to you, sir, is this. And my question to you, sir, is this. What initiatives will your government be putting in place for individuals who are forcibly returned to Jamaica, acknowledging that not all of them, as a matter of fact, a vast majority of them, are not criminal deportees? And also recognizing that many of them are returning with skills, legal skills, and resources that can contribute, you know, to the advancement of the country? And one of the problems is that because of the stigma, getting jobs is a problem. That contributes to the violence and the crime that we have in Jamaica. And so your government really has to do something about seeing how we are going to reintegrate individuals for our sake and to Jamaica. Thank you.
You know, we have been looking at the deportation of Jamaicans. Recently, you would have known that there was a significant deportation of Jamaicans from the United Kingdom. The government of Jamaica undertook several agreements that we have to respect. We can't just, you know, change our international agreements when we are silent. But we have been very sensitive to those who have been deported from other countries back to Jamaica. We are not able to do as much as we would like to. There are those who have been deported who we have to keep an eye on. Let's be frank about that. But, and there are those who have been deported who have no connections to Jamaica. And I think that is the real vulnerable group. And I happen to know that there are several civic organizations which make it a point of duty to assist. So I was having a discussion recently with the Minister of National Security about how the government can support those NGOs who are helping those persons who have been deported without any family. They left Jamaica when they were four and all their family is dispersed all over the world. How we can help them to integrate into the society? And how we can prevent those that show a propensity for crime, for actually getting involved in crime? So there are some things happening on the ground. I won't tell you there are enough, but the government is acting to ensure that the interests of Jamaicans and those who are deported are served.
Okay, question then.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Sharon Lotus. I'm interested in Jamaicans giving back. As of June this year, I just did the paperwork for my charity, Dear Child Foundation. My question to you is this, I have other things, but I'm not going to go there. The percentage of customs duty? I just sent $1,100 worth of back-to-school supplies, 25 cents for crayons, and the custom duty was $68,000, even though I have...
Just to be clear, $68,000, not $800?
Now, there was an issue on... Shh! There was an issue on our part. We were encouraged to register in Jamaica because I've been giving back since 2014. And we did the paperwork with the company's offices of Jamaica, went to friendly societies of Jamaica. And then when we got to the war, one stop by Timbali, they said that you have to now go to King's Port and get a tax compliance certification. So then I advised the other director, "Go ahead and clear the stuff because, you know, then they're saying the custom duty is $68,000." And I'm talking to them on the phone and I want to know, my question is this, how do you, the government comes up with it? GCC 17%. What is the percentage? If you are an immigrant in America for 19, they're charging you $2,000 duty. That's like 100%. How does business people, you know, go through and stuff like that?
All right, thank you very much. Sir Prime Minister.
I'm very careful how I answer questions to do with the Ministry of Finance. But, but, you know, customs, customs revenue is a significant part of public revenue. And the government depends on that to meet its obligations. Now, just to be clear, your question is, my interpretation of your question is, how can we make it seamless that you can give to Jamaica without paying for it? I mean, you shouldn't have to pay to give. We had established something called the National Educational Trust. And the idea behind the trust was that if you wanted to give something to Jamaica, because the challenge with the customs is that the custom can never know for certain whether or not you're trying to import something into Jamaica commercially or it is truly a challenge. Once there is a loophole, somebody's going to try and get through it and the government will lose revenue. And so people like yourself, who genuinely give to Jamaica, end up suffering for the bad. So what we have decided to do is to establish a portal, one portal, where you can give for health and education. You register with that organization and you will have a list of possible things to give for. Or if you want to give for something, you tell us and you send your gifts to the trust. And the trust will, on your behalf, dispose. That way, we are certain that what you send is actually the target. That is being, that is being worked on now. And we, we, we are, we are hoping to have that established within two years. And not just that, but, you know, you may not necessarily need to send the books. Books are already in Jamaica. Maybe what you really wanted to do was to just swipe your credit card and say, "Get these books from my old school that I used to attend," which would save you all the problems of the duty and the collection. But if you want to do that, we will facilitate that as well. So it's about creating options for you to give easily to your country and to the causes that matter to you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let me tell the rules once more, Chad. We're taking one, one question there, one here, one here, one here, and we have to arrest, all right? I am sorry. I am really sorry.
Well, I'm asking you to bear in mind that here, I'm told that there are as many persons outside as there are inside here. And I just want it because I know a lot of people would be upset having come and not had a chance to interact. So at the end of this, I'd really love to get the chance, maybe, to say hello to the people outside.
All right? Thank you very much. Agree? Agree? All right, so let's go with brief questions now. No editorials right now, please. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Prime Minister Holmes. My name is Tracy Anne Barclay, and I currently work in the New York City Department of Education as an occupational therapist. I had the honor and privilege of visiting Kingston, Jamaica this May to discuss special education. And my passion is children with disabilities. So my question to you is, what is your vision and plan on investing in special education for the children in Jamaica? Because when I was there, I had the opportunity of just meeting two out of three occupational therapists for the entire island. And that is a severe lack. And I'm interested in engaging in special education, infrastructure building, and obviously services for children. How can I get involved?
You know, the situation has improved in Jamaica, believe it or not, as it relates to dealing with special needs. We have done a child find and a child registry. So we are now able to identify kids with special needs and disabilities. So autism and all the spectrum disabilities, we have been able to identify them. So we now have better statistics. We have a better understanding of the nature and quantum of the problem. We are presently trying to change the way in which the educational system responds. Before, we had an education system that basically said the child should learn according to how the teacher teaches. And that meant that many children who could not learn according to how the teacher is teaching, blackfjed behind. Now we are changing that. And so the teachers who are coming into the system now are more inclusive and more flexible and are adopting new teaching styles that match the way in which kids learn. I'm not saying that this is right across the board, but it is improving. There are more teachers who are adopting these kinds of teaching strategies. When I was the Minister of Education, we changed the system to put in place a stream of learning where we would identify the kids with special needs and we would be able to direct them to where the resources are to address their needs. And this is being done presently. The government also sponsors, as many that are brought to their attention, the education of children with special needs. So if there is a child with special needs and it is brought to the attention of the government or the government identifies it through our registry, the government actually pays for the education of that child up to a certain point. So we are taking steps. But again, I would never pretend to say that it is universal or it is comparable to what pertains here. We certainly do not have enough specialists. You know where they are? They are right here. The fact that you're up there is something that we will follow with you specifically. But since I have this mic, I'll mainly appeal that we really need the repatriation of some of these critical skills back to Jamaica.
Exactly the question that I have. My name is Rochelle White. I've been here for 33 years, taken forcibly by my parents to America to live the American dream. I've been blessed enough to contribute to the educational system positively in New York City particularly. But my heart yearns for Jamaica. I've always wanted to come back to Jamaica to contribute to the progress of the country. What can I do? And most adults like myself who are forcibly removed, what can we do to come back and give back to Jamaica and help with the infrastructure, to help people, residents, to come back and, you know, give back to Jamaica? What can we do?
Well, you know, we, we worked out a program because we recognize that there is a strong cohort of Jamaicans living overseas who want to come back and work in Jamaica, but there is no system. So we were looking at designing a program similar to the United States Peace Corps, but in reverse, where we would establish a program where it would be structured by the government, in the same way that the Peace Corps is structured, where we would invite persons who have retired, persons who have reached end of career and want to transition into something else, persons who want to send their children back to Jamaica to just experience a little of Jamaica, to give back in a structured way. So we would be able to identify the areas of need, we would, you know, I'm very careful in saying provide a stipend. Because we couldn't pay you. And ensure that your participation is fulfilling because the worst thing is for you to come and then realize that your services is not fulfilling. Because you have to get something out of this. You have to feel that you have contributed. And so that is being developed now as we speak. You can imagine where a new government, tons of things to do. But these are the things that are on our agenda as it relates to the diaspora.
Sharon, go ahead. Quick question.
Thank you, Erwin. Mr. Prime Minister, thank you so much. And to the esteemed guests who are here, and to everybody in the room, big up yourselves for representing goodness evening. Mr. Prime Minister, as you can see, there are burning issues in the diaspora. And the young lady actually spoke about what I wanted to speak about, wanting to give back to Jamaica. I too have been here forcibly, got here forcibly, and want to give back so much. In addressing some of these burning issues, I'd like to invite you to come onto my platform, CPRlive.org, where we can have you for an extended period of time and get people to talk to you. You can't come every once in a while, we need you. We need you more. You have to make it regular. You have to do something, it's a private...
At that point...
They're too, they're too slow. You see, you see this? People want to talk to you, there's so much.
At that point, and I'm afraid, you know, tomorrow I address the United Nations and I'm going to be making some comments. And I want to be at my full. But, you know, Jamaica is not one person. The Prime Minister really is not one person. It has to be a team effort. And my job, my job is to divide up the world. And so we have Ambassador Marks here, who has her division of work to do. And I'd like to introduce to you Dr. Nigel Clark, Ambassador for Economic Affairs for Jamaica. And he is also the Deputy Chairman of our Economic Growth Council, which is a body that I have appointed to develop a plan, basically a roadmap for Jamaica and to build public consensus around that roadmap. So I'm going to ask Ambassador, I hope I'm not taking you by surprise, a few words, and then Dr. Clark to say a few words, if you will allow it, please.
Yes, you're taking me by surprise, but I'm here to serve. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you. I've indicated that you want an opportunity to give back to Jamaica. So on this occasion, Mr. Prime Minister, I'm allowing persons to speak with you and to, you know, pass back the mic so to speak because I see the need. And I will be having consistent roadshows to continue on the discussion and to put a path of action where we can start having this interaction, moving beyond just talking, but actually doing some things where a person's been a part of Jamaica's development and the prosperity plan. So over to you, but you will be here much more of what we are doing together between the embassy and the diaspora groups all over the country.
Good evening, everybody. It's wonderful to be here with fellow Jamaicans. I was outside, I was here for the Prime Minister's presentation, but I was outside for a lot of the question and answer. And it's amazing the number of people who came who could not get in. Mr. Consul General, next time, I'll have a big event. I'm going to ask you, when you hear their complaints, let them know, not the Prime Minister. The energy is, the energy in... The energy in the room is palpable and it's amazing, absolutely amazing. As the Prime Minister mentioned, you appointed an Economic Growth Council and appointed me as the Deputy Chairman of the Council. And one of the main recommendations that we are making to the government is to deepen the level of diaspora engagement. To ensure that the resources of the diaspora, the skills, the capital, the experience, the relationships, the knowledge, the know-how can be harnessed for the growth and development of Jamaica. One of the specific things we're recommending within diaspora engagement is for those who were forcefully removed. And who, you know, with the development of laws in their home country, probably don't even have a Jamaican passport. To develop, this is a recommendation, it has to be approved, the recommendation is that we develop some special global Jamaican card, right? That's not a passport, not a passport, but it's a card that identifies us, right? And warns us. And when you present that card in Jamaica, it's a special status, you're not a visitor to Jamaica. You're not a visitor to Jamaica. And what we want to do is for the Jamaican community around the world to see themselves as one community with the, and be empowered to contribute socially, to contribute economically to the development and growth of Jamaica. I'll stop there, Prime Minister, I don't think... So, when you see that proposal out in the public domain, I want you to write into the newspapers and call it, if you can call it, and lend your support to it so that we can get, you know, the Prime Minister, I'm sure, will agree, but to get the government as a whole to agree that this is the way, one of the ways to engage the diaspora. We want to make sure that, as the Prime Minister mentioned, there are mechanisms to harness, you know, those who want to give back in terms of resources. And you can do it online, you press a button and it says, okay, you want to donate to schools, the schools come out, right? And the funds go directly to the place where it's supposed to go with accountability, with reporting, with a higher standard of poverty integrity. You know, the money that's coming to Jamaica is a fraction of what would come, fraction. If people had the confidence, confidence, yeah? If you could take away the asymmetry of information, where you don't have all the information, if we could organize a thing properly, I believe that the resources coming from the diaspora would be quintuple, you know, go five times easily. And to think of what I would do for Jamaica. So, again, when you see that proposal, I want you to write in and want you to support it, right? And, you know, there has been talk about involving the diaspora in a more formal way. Now, that's a long process, okay? But that process should begin and we should have a conversation about that, about more formal engagement. Now, you know, Jamaica since 1962 has had a very low rate of growth. And what we don't understand as a community is the, what the impact that has on standards of living. Economic growth is what expands opportunity and what allows standards of living to increase. And one of the things that we want to do is to put into the public domain the need for us to have economic growth and to let everybody know the role that they can play, yeah? Now, I, the Prime Minister appointed me Chairman of NHT. NHT, as you know, is headed to that builds houses and get contribution. From time to time, people from the diaspora want to be able to access NHT. So, NHT says to them, all right, like everybody else, you have to contribute. And once you contribute, you can, you can borrow. But then, we have to make sure that after they borrow, they what?
Pay back.
They pay back and they continue to contribute. Because that's the idea of it, Jamaicans in Jamaica, you contribute for life, right? So, we want to engage you on a way of doing that because, you know, getting everybody here should have a house in Jamaica.
I agree.
Yeah? Every member of the diaspora. And tell me carefully with me, every member of the diaspora should have a house in Jamaica. Yeah? Yeah? So, what we want to do is to make it easy for Jamaicans in the diaspora to own a piece of Jamaica. You know, but what happens in some countries, you know, the country take off, grow prosperity, and when you go back, it's pure skyscraper, you can't afford nothing. That's not what we want. We want everybody here to have a piece of the rock. And you know what? By having a piece of the rock, by having something in Jamaica, what you're going to do is you're going to help Jamaica to grow. So, it's something in it for you and something in it for the people in Jamaica. So, that's one of the things that we want to work on. And the Chairman of the Economic Growth Council is a member of the diaspora, right? That's what we went to do. We never, we said, okay, we want to set up a growth council, has a lot of business beef on it, and the person who chairs it actually doesn't even live in Jamaica. The person who chairs it lives in Canada, you know, Michael Leachin, who is one of the wealthiest people who lived in North America and who is Chairman of the National Commercial Bank, he is the Chairman of the Economic Growth Council and his passion is the diaspora community as well. So, we, you know, we want to make sure that people in the diaspora take advantage of the investment opportunities in Jamaica, right? Whether it be housing, right, or the other. Now, the rules about people in Jamaica making investment opportunities available here are very strict. So, you cannot just come and set up and sell security or whatever. But, you know, Jamaica is your home and we want Jamaica to be, while we welcome international investors and foreign investors, we want people of Jamaican heritage, of Jamaican descent to own a piece of Jamaica. Thank you, Prime Minister.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Clark. So, stop looking at your 401K plans and all that. All right. I'm sorry again, but we're seized right there. We'll go to the top of the last verses up there. Stop.
Question is, good evening, Mr. Prime Minister and to all the ones that are here. In January, I am, first of all, Dr. B from the diaspora Africa and Rastafarian Congress. In January, I visited Jamaica with Jaja Foundation as part of a give back to the island. We had a team of physicians that went to Finland to the Halle Selassie High School. I was appalled that when the physician asked most of the girls, they were all molested by what did the community? My question to you, sir, is there a molestation network set up within the island of Jamaica that will address the molestation of everyone?
It's one of the very disturbing things that has stuck with our culture as to how many of our men treat our women and in particular prey on our young girls. It is, again, one of the things that we tend to hold on to culturally and we must divest ourselves of it very quickly. We can't make any excuses for it. It is shameful, disgraceful, despicable. And some of us in the back of our minds still say, "There's nothing wrong with it." And I think not in today's world. The governments and respected governments have made progress on the matter, but it is still an issue. We have passed new legislation. We have put in place a special unit in the police force that deals with these issues. And now, public attention is being paid to it. The former Prime Minister, and when I was leader of the opposition, and our roles have been reversed, both of us have spoken publicly on this issue and continue to lead public opinion against the issue of molestation, car abuse, child abuse, and violence against our women. It must stop. It's not manly, it's not cruel, it doesn't make you a man, right? It makes you really a beast. So, I think the more of us who speak out against that and who characterize it as barbaric rather than something manly or cruel, I think once we do that, then we are on our way to change. We are prosecuting many of the people who are committing these crimes, but not enough. And I personally will maintain my position, strong position against it. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you so much for coming on. It has been a wonderful evening. I'm very pleased.
Okay, don't leave because you have a close-up of the youngster. You have a close-up of the youngster. I'm sorry, but that's the last question we're taking tonight from a young man who's standing. I know you have an important question. AskOPM at OPM dot com. Your question will be answered. I thank you very much, sir. The next question goes to this gentleman right here. He's a youngster who's been waiting and we need to hear from our youth.
All right, good night, everyone. First of all, Mr. Prime Minister, let me say that it is an honor to stand here as a noble Jamaican requesting or addressing a question to you as the Honorable Prime Minister. And I must say as well that I bought into every concept of that 10-point plan and that was the core or instrumental reason for voting for the GOP. It is the reason to vote. Now, my question is, what initiatives, if any, are being undertaken to proliferate Jamaica as a viable option? Are the votes... Let me repeat the question. What initiatives, if any, are being undertaken to proliferate Jamaica as a viable option as opposed to its international counterparts so as to alleviate the escalating problem of migration amongst its many youths? Because I must say, I graduated from Kingston College in 2009. I graduated amongst a cohort of well over 2,000 or more youngsters and I can tell you that within that, or of that 2,000, three-quarters of that either reside in Canada, the United Kingdom, or the United States at this point in time. And that's a major, a ground lost in Jamaica because we're all in sin and mine. And we're a constituency. Oh, and last one, please. I remember a young Jamaican, I reside in this Grange constituency.
Let me, let me say this firstly. You know, the nature of the Jamaican state has always been that its people are migrant from there. You know, we have a diaspora, believe it or not, in Costa Rica, in Lima. We have a diaspora in Colombia, right? We have a big diaspora in Antigua, in Cayman, one-third of the population of us. Jamaicans are all over. The idea isn't to stop Jamaicans from traveling or from seeking opportunities elsewhere, but it should be optional. For many, it is as you have described it, we are forced to leave because there are no options in Jamaica. And so, the first thing that we have committed to do is to make sure that you have good government as number one. Then, we manage your taxes well. And then, we create a public sector that is supportive and attractive to investors. And the investors don't have to be foreign investors. The investors can be diaspora investors because that is why we are here today, except for you, come back and invest in your country. And then, when we do that, we have to control the crime and violence in the society. And that is why we have appointed the Growth Council, that is why we're taking initiatives with the IMF, the World Bank, the IDB, that is why we are engaging the public sector to make change, that is why we're developing Plan Secure Jamaica, and that is why we are committing our lives, every single sinew of muscle and brainpower to make Jamaica the prosperous country we know it can be. So that you can come back and have your children in Jamaica, live, work, raise your family, and retire in paradise.
Okay, that's all for questions tonight. I'm quite sorry, again, if your question was not answered tonight. No, 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 we did well so far. Excuse me? I know, I know, I take the blame for that, but we have a time limit as well, number one, but number two, we have several questions been asked. And again, I say, there is an opportunity for your questions to be answered. All right? Please, 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 all right? We have done well tonight, haven't we? Did the Prime Minister answer as many questions as possible? I'd like to recognize one of our longest-serving politicians here in New York State, the Honorable Nick Perry. We also have Senator Kevin Parker here, who claims to be Jamaican, especially when he's amongst Jamaica. I understand, ladies and gentlemen, I will take responsibility for that, all right? Let's move on. We have done well so far. We have done well so far. All right, at this point, ladies and gentlemen, at this point, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask... Oh, okay. At this point, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have a board of thanks, so we're going to ask Mrs. Marcy Scares James to come forth and do that. Please give her a round of applause.
On protocol observe, ladies and gentlemen, I'm very honored to have been asked to propose the vote of thanks on this very special occasion. On behalf of Mr. Darren McCree, the Acting Consul General here in New York, I express heartfelt gratitude this evening to you, Mr. Prime Minister, for carving out the time during your visit to the 71st session of the United Nations General Assembly in order to provide a forum to meet with members of the diaspora, to bring news and address matters of concern and importance to us. We leave tonight with a much clearer understanding of what we can do in the invaluable quest to further build Jamaica, land we love. An event such as this cannot be created overnight. Several dedicated people came together, willingly of their time and wisdom to make this event happen. A very special thank you to Ms. Asean Roach, Mr. Erwin Clare, and Bishop Riley for their contributions this evening. Dr. Julius Garvey, thank you for the encouragement to sign the petition to exonerate your father before time runs out. To the Staff of the Consulate General of Jamaica, I extend special thanks for, among other responsibilities, working hard behind the scenes to make this evening a success. To the following companies for providing delicious food and beverage, Adore Restaurant, Tasty Delicious, Chef Forkit Restaurant, and Grace Kennedy USA, we say thank you. To the media and public relations companies for covering this evening's program, Ari Jam Radio, Hands-on Media, Pina North America, Power 106 FM, Carrot News, and Finn Partners, as well as any other media present, we are indeed grateful. For entertainment, we're indebted to Ms. Carleen Madden, Mr. Steven Souza, Mr. Patrick David, Mr. Teddy Crawford, and Vip Records. To Mr. Courtney French, General Manager of the Jamaican Performing Arts Center, we thank you for providing a venue which to host this evening's gathering. Thanks to Bennett's Limousine Service for providing transportation, and to the Uja and Jamaica Diaspora Northeast Volunteers, as well as all other volunteers for your time and efforts. We are also grateful to the NYPD and members of the Honorable Prime Minister Security Team for their assistance in keeping everyone safe. To the entire delegation here with us from Jamaica, and Ambassador Marks, we thank you for being here. Finally, ladies and gentlemen, your presence here this evening means a lot. Thank you for traveling from New York City's boroughs as well as out of town to be here. We encourage you to share the information from this evening's experience with other members of the diaspora who could not be present. A very good night to you all and as we say in Jamaica, walk good.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're being streamed live to thank them for tuning in. It's been a fantastic occasion. I think we're on the start of something progressive as we work towards achieving prosperity. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.